What is smarter than talking?
Smarter than talking, Mayor.
An N.
An N.
Spelling bee.
John. All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. We have the public hearing ordinance on the utility rate report for fiscal year 2020, first of two readings.
Good evening.
Mayor.
Good evening.
This is working. Yes. Yay. It's just going to be.
It's gone.
Okay. There we go. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilors, I'm going to review, do a little bit of a review of the operations overview for the four utilities that the city operates. With regard to the water distribution system, the city has over 14,300 customers and we maintain 183 miles of water main that ranges in size from two inch to 18 inches in diameter. We also maintain 1,100 fire hydrants and 3,400 water valves. Just to highlight some of the project work that we're doing to replace some of the old aged infrastructure within the water distribution system, we do this really to improve fire protection, reduce main breaks, thus reducing emergency repairs that sometimes happen in the middle of the night. This also decreases maintenance costs. We also do this to improve the overall water quality of the system and address the undersized lines, thus increasing the pressure within the system. To date, since the inception of this program, we've completed 73 projects. We've been, this program's been where we've had a contractor working diligently to replace old lines, working about 10 years now. And to date, we've replaced about 15 miles of pipe and the cost at a cost of about $16 We also have a water loss prevention program. This is where we test the meters and replace those meters that need to be replaced. Years ago, we had a testing of our system and we realized a lot of the larger meters greater than one inch in diameter that serves more of our commercial and business community, we couldn't test because they didn't have the proper test ports. They were in really small boxes rather than the regular sized vault boxes. And to date, we've replaced about 230 of these meters and last year we replaced 84. So we are well on our way to being able to test our entire system of these large meters. Annually, we also do a system-wide leak detection survey. Last year, we detected 10 leaks within our system. And what happens when these leaks are detected, we immediately with in-house staff repair the leaks that are occurring and this reduced about 68,000 gallons per day in our system. We also are installing new low-flow ultrasonic meters within our entire system. And these low-flow meters on the low end of the spectrum actually register, I'll give you an example, for a one-inch meter, the low flow on a regular meter that we used to use would only go down to one gallon per minute. But on these low-flow ultrasonic meters, they go down to .25 gallons per minute. So we're able to detect more of the water that's being utilized through our system and not losing it. Our water conservation efforts last year were recognized by EPA for the 2018 Water Defense Sustained Excellence Award. I also want to highlight our backflow cross-connection prevention program that goes, that I haven't highlighted previously. We actually inventory 1,200 backflow prevention devices and these devices are put in mostly in the commercial community. Any building that's over three stories in height, funeral homes, medical facilities also have backflow prevention devices. Car auto repair shops have backflow prevention devices. And these are inspected annually, which we monitor to protect water quality within our system. Little bit about the wastewater system. We maintain 171 miles of pipe and over 5,700 manholes. With this system, we are trying to address our aged infrastructure and fix our pipe system. We have what's called a find and fix approach where we have a contractor that with 200 bid items, so it's a lot of bid items that we have at our luxury to use, and we can do a pretty comprehensive rehabilitation replacement of our system. And to date, we've replaced 25% of our system or rehabilitated at a cost of $19 million. And we estimate based on this find and fix approach, which a lot of other communities are looking at, because we've given some national papers on how we've, we're trying to aggressively approach rehabilitating our aged sewer system. And a lot of communities are trying to also look at Charlottesville as a way to look at how they might rehab their systems in the future. We also maintain an active fats, oils, and grease program. We try to minimize fats, oils, and greases that get into the sewer system because they can clog the sewer system and create havoc and cause inconvenience to our citizens. And we inspect over 300 restaurants annually to make sure that they're maintaining their grease traps efficiently. And we've also got a public awareness program that we've put in place in the last several years to make sure that households try not to dispose of their fats, oils, and greases down the drain. We also maintain the stormwater conveyance system. We've got 130 miles of pipe and over 8,250 structures. The Water Resources Protection Program, we address rehabilitating aging stormwater infrastructure, addressing drainage issues, and pursuing environmental stewardship in order to protect our waterways. Similarly to the wastewater program where we have a find and fix program, we have one contractor that does the wastewater as well as the stormwater contract. And we see efficiencies with that where we can rehabilitate and replace our aging infrastructure. To date, we've replaced about 10 miles of stormwater pipe and 250 structures totaling $7 million. And regarding our gas system, we provide safe, efficient, reliable service. We, Charlottesville Gas has been in business for over 150 years. And we currently have over 20,200 customers, so we have city customers as well as the urban area of Almar County that we serve. We maintain 330 miles of gas lines and 275 miles of gas service lines to the household. In order to provide a safe system, we have to comply with state and federal regulatory requirements on everything we do from a gas safety standpoint. And we have an operator qualification plan and program that actually looks at making sure employees that work to install gas infrastructure are competent to perform those tasks. A typical gas employee may have 30 to 50 tasks that they're tested on and field tested on before they're allowed to do it out, actually allowed to do it in the field. And they have to make sure, we make sure the records are accurate. And some of these tests occur biannually, some are every three years and some are annually. So a gas employee has to be competent to install safe, reliable gas service. Our plan and testing records were audited by the State Corporation Commission last year on behalf of the FMSA Federal Agency, and no violations were found last year. In addition, we also have to have a Distribution Integrity Management Plan, or what's called DEMP. There's all these acronyms in the utility world. And this addresses potential threats to our gas system. And our DEMP plan was audited last year also by the State Corporation Commission, and there were no findings. An example of a potential threat to our gas system is third-party damages. So if a contractor's out there working and he's not paying attention to the gas utility marks in the field, he can hit our lines and that can be a threat to our system. So we have, we have things in place to make sure that contractors are educated and they call 811 before they start digging and we try to make sure that they're, they don't damage our gas systems. In addition, the gas utility is working with the Local Energy Alliance Program, or LEAP, to launch a new program July 1st in order to offer energy efficiency upgrades at no cost to income-qualified households. And our primary goal here is to make sure households are more energy efficient by reducing greenhouse gas emissions and also reducing living expenses for these residents by reducing their utility bills. And I'd be remiss in not talking about Flicker the Flame, the gas mascot that promotes gas safety and awareness. Last year, we had a jingle contest that, you know, I'm not going to try to sing the Flicker the Flame jingle, but once, because if I do, it'll be in your head all night. But we had a jingle contest. People weren't out, you know, to change the jingle, but do their own version and video it. So we had kids from schools that sang the flicker song and we had people that did videos and pretty high-tech kind of graphics. And we had some middles and there were 213,000 views on Flicker's Facebook page. And we had almost 2,400 people voted for their favorite video. And we look at this as a good promotion to promote gas safety and awareness. We also have some additional operation staffing needs and adjustments. We are requesting one new position within the wastewater utility. It's a utility construction inspector. This person will concentrate on inspecting new development wastewater lines that are installed. We have to ensure that these lines, when they're installed, meet our criteria as well as state and federal guidelines. And we also have to make sure that they're being installed properly so that the city can maintain them and we won't have a burden later on. But we found with all the new development, we have this need. In addition, this position will also concentrate on inspecting some cap, our capital improvements program. In stormwater, we are requesting three new positions for a maintenance crew. We found now that the, that the utility has six-plus years since it was originated, the stormwater utility. We need to really concentrate on the maintenance of our system to improve our service to our citizens. And so that's the reason for that request. We're also requesting that four existing positions be moved from the general fund to the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund. And this, we're going to be able to do with no increase to the stormwater utility fee. We saw a way to shift funding from cash funding, some of the capital improvement program to this effort. And that way, there's no increase in the fee. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris, who will talk about the financial aspects of the utility rate report.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Chris Cullen and I'm the City's Director of Finance. And so to ensure the efficient and orderly maintenance and operations of these essential services that Mrs. Hildebrand's been describing, sufficient financial resources are required. And while the need for this investment is not without cost, our rates must also be balanced with the need for affordability. But put succinctly, the goal is to provide service in a safe, reliable, responsive, and cost-efficient manner. And so taking just a few minutes to just briefly describe the revenue requirements of each of the utilities in the upcoming fiscal year. For water, the projected budget totals just a little over $12 million. The single largest cost of that is the purchase of drinking water from the Ravenna Water and Sewer Authority, or RWSA, which is about, that single item is about 5.9 million or 48% of the budget, which is a little over a 3, 3.4% increase over the current year. Debt service for existing a new infrastructure total is about 2.5 million. And then the city operations and maintenance portion of the revenue requirements for water totals about 4.1 million, an increase of less than 2%. On the wastewater side, we're looking at about 15.5 million in total to operate the utility. Again, similar to water, the single largest cost of that is purchasing wastewater treatment from Ravenna Water and Sewer Authority, approximately 8.9 million or 58% of that budget, which very similar to water, is just about 3.5% increase over the current year. Debt service for infrastructure improvements totals about 3 million. And the city operations and maintenance portion of that is about 3.6 million, which includes the additional utilities, construction inspector position that Lauren described. Moving over to natural gas, the revenue requirements total 27.2 million in the upcoming fiscal year. And again, similar to water and wastewater, the single largest purchase is the purchase of gas from BP, the city's wholesaler, totaling about 11 million or 42% of that budget. The average cost per decatherm has increased over the last year. And I'm going to just go and I'm going to dive into that just a little more deeply here in a second. About 12.6% over a year ago today were the base rates that council adopted a year ago. But as you know, gas is a commodity that's traded on a daily basis. And so the actual cost of purchase gas may fluctuate during the year due to weather, supply and demand, other political, economic influences beyond the city's control. And to adjust for that, to ensure that we are neither collecting too much nor not enough, we make an adjustment every month to the, to the gas utility rates, which is a little different than water and sewer, which stay the same year around. And so this PGA, this purchase gas adjustment, you see that on the monthly bill. And in some months, it goes up, in some months it goes down. There's sort of a seasonal element to that in sort of a normal year. Typically in winter, during the heating months, it goes up, higher demand. In the summer months, it goes down somewhat. Last year was a different year and we, Ms. Hildebrand and I had the opportunity to spend some time with the folks at BP to get a more in-depth understanding of what's been happening. And last year, about this time, gas production in the U.S. was fairly flat. While there is more gas out there than maybe 10 years ago, the actual production that was occurring a year ago was relatively flat. As we headed into last summer, a good portion of natural gas is used As we headed into last summer, a good portion of natural gas is used to produce electricity. And so heading into the summer cooling months, last summer was hotter than normal, so you had a low supply in gas, high demand for that gas. And as they move through the summer, typically at the end of summer, beginning of fall, gas producers will actually start storing gas for the winter months. But that gas was not available, and so it further exacerbated the, the low-supply aspect of having gas being available for the heating months. Fast forward to early December, you might recall, early December was quite cold. And so again, you had a situation of low supply, high demand, which resulted in a higher cost of purchase gas. The purchase gas adjustment was quite high in the November and December timeframe, higher than what we've seen in the last few years. Since then, that PGA has been going down gradually. However, we're still, based on our discussions with BP, expecting the cost of gas to still be higher than normal. But as I mentioned, we do make an adjustment on a monthly basis should that not occur. And talking a little bit further with the folks at BP, I came away with the impression, based on my, based on our conversation, and Lauren can certainly chime in if she, if she wants to elaborate on her thoughts. The U.S. is now a, an exporter of natural gas. So the prices that we pay as the City of Charlottesville are influenced by things that happen overseas in terms of weather, geopolitics, economics, those sorts of things. And so I came away with the, the impression that sort of the increased volatility that we've seen recently may become the norm, as opposed to more of the sort of seasonal fluctuations that I described before. But again, we do make that adjustment on a monthly basis, depending on what does happen, to account for that. And so that's the gas portion of, of the gas bill and of the gas rates. The city operations and maintenance piece costs about just a little over sixteen million, and that's an increase of less than two percent over the current year. Finally, stormwater, projected budget totals two point nine million, and this is actually a decrease from FY nineteen. And as Ms. Hildebrand describes, reflects a couple of things. One is a shift towards bond funding for capital projects to better match the pace of the actual work being done. But it also includes an increase for the additional maintenance crew employees being transferred from the general fund and moving to more of a maintenance approach than necessarily building or constructing new infrastructure. And so the recommendations for the utility rates for next year, the first is implementing the second year of the three-year transition plan for the University of Virginia, away from the rates in the nineteen eighty-one water agreement to full city rates for water and sewer. And then secondly, the proposed changes to utility rates for water, sewer, natural gas, and stormwater, and we'll talk about each of these here in a little more detail, starting with the next slide. Just as a reminder, we're in year two of this three-year transition plan. Year one, a year ago, the difference of twenty-five percent, the university rates were, were brought up by twenty-five percent of the difference between the rates in the nineteen eighty-one agreement and the city rates last year. Year two, that we're heading into right now, it's now going to make up seventy-five percent of the difference between the nineteen eighty-one agreement to the city rates. And then next year, they'll be at a hundred percent. They will be paying the, the full city rates. So a year from now, all the University of Virginia facilities will be paying the full city rates. All customers in the city will be paying one rate, and that was one of the goals coming out, out of this effort from a year ago. So the proposed rates that you see for FY twenty twenty, water, a change of about one percent. Wastewater, two percent. Natural gas, an average of seven percent. For the stormwater utility fee, as Ms. Hildebrand mentioned, there's no proposed changes to the current fees. Also, no changes to the monthly service charges for water, wastewater, and natural gas. And just one, one thing to point out with the natural gas, just to be cognizant of, is that come July one, your gas bill's not going to jump by seven percent. Again, that's comparing a snapshot of a year ago to July one of this year. Again, we make this purchase gas adjustment on a monthly basis, and so a good amount of that increase has already been included in the rates that folks have already been paying us through the course of the fiscal year. But again, in terms of comparing one date, July one of last year to July one of this year, it's actually a seven percent increase on average. And again, finally, the impact on the average customer for water, wastewater, gas, and stormwater, these are folks, residential customers who use a, use four hundred cubic feet of water and about forty-six hundred cubic feet of natural gas, and who own a property with approximately of twenty-four hundred square feet. You're looking at a total increase of a little less than four dollars per month for these four utilities. And you can see that broken up between water, wastewater, and gas being the largest of those, as I mentioned before. And so that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions you might have, we also have a public hearing on this topic this evening as well. Thank you.
So I had a couple of questions about, just clarifying, the twenty-five percent increase that came in from UVA starting this year. If you can explain to the public what, where that money is going, and how is it being, you know, just utilized within the?
Sure. So nineteen eighty-one agreement, obviously a thirty-eight-year-old agreement. The rates set in that for water and sewer were less than the full city rates. Unfortunately, a lot of the documentation from nineteen eighty-one does not describe how those rates were set or what the intent was, although obviously, the world was a different place thirty-eight years ago in terms of the water and wastewater industry, the costs, the regulations. Certainly, the way UVA operates today compared to thirty-eight years ago is, is very different. And so we don't really have a good idea of how those rates were established. However, that being said, as we went to moving to the university paying full rates, as part of the agreement, we initially proposed a two-year phase-in, but landed on a three-year phase-in over that time of twenty-five to seventy-five to one hundred. And so here, as we're heading into year two, is the seventy-five percent. It's, it's the big jump of the three years. And so the additional revenues that are being collected by having the university paying its, its, that share of the rates certainly means that they're paying more akin to what their actual costs are. Again, not knowing how or why the nineteen eighty-one rates were established, I think it's fair to say that in this time and age, customers were subsidizing the university rates. I think that's, that's pretty evident. And so by having the university contributing to its share based on its usage of water and wastewater, that certainly makes, that adds additional revenue to the utilities, which then has a benefit to all customers in terms of everyone paying their proportionate share. I apologize for that. And so those funds being collected by the university are going to fund the water and wastewater operations and infrastructure to operate the city system, and the university paying its proportionate share based on its usage of those systems.
Are there any other questions? Okay. So I'll open the public hearing. Rebecca Quinn.
Rebecca Quinn, one oh four Fourth Street here in the city. I'm just going to touch on some things that I covered in an email to council. The staff memo states, and was reiterated by staff, that the utilities do not operate on a for-profit basis. As such, utility rates, I'm still quoting, are calculated annually to bring each fund to a break-even point. Okay, but as I asked in my email, and I don't believe it was adequately answered, really, was what, what accounts for this very significant increase in the gas rate, three and something percent? And oh, by the way, I'm sure some of you know better than I do, you know, it takes some people a lot to cover a four-dollar or three-and-a-half-dollar increase. Some people have to work an hour to cover that much. But, so I also wanted to question, well, I wanted to question or ask if you have seen a breakdown of how much of the average residential bill goes towards various operational costs. And I believe one was, an older one was distributed to you and will be spoken to by Ms. Smith here, here shortly. But look at it carefully. The gas rate payers pay a significantly disproportionate share, a higher share, five or sometimes thirty times more than the amount of money out of each average bill is taken from the water and the wastewater side. You know, for example, why is the gas rate payer paying so much more of computer support systems? Are there, yes, they're more, well, it's, it's as a percentage. So I have expressed in the past, and I remain concerned about another element of our gas bill, and that is the use of what is called payment in lieu of taxes. It's levied only on the gas bills. While I understand it is legal in Virginia, I think it is wrong for this city to collect those taxes and deposit a significant portion of those taxes into the general fund. Okay, remember, the taxes are supposed to be collected for a particular purpose, for the utility, but they're going into the general fund. This means those property owners and renters who use gas are paying a disproportionate share of expenditures that have no relationship to gas. Not only is that not fair, I think it really means the gas utility isn't operating on a for-profit basis, and the deposits to the general fund are equivalent to profits because they exceed operating costs. So think about the impact on those lower-income folks in older homes that are heated by gas. And while LEAP, and I'm glad the city is supporting it, has programs to help those older homes become more energy-efficient, I believe this payment in lieu of taxes disproportionately burdens many of our low-income families and therefore is regressive.
Thank you. DeeDee Smith.
Good evening. Hi, I'm, my name is DeeDee Smith. I live at twenty-six fifty-two Jefferson Park Circle. I'd like to welcome Dr. Richardson to Charlottesville. I was on council from twenty-twelve until twenty-sixteen, and about every time about this, every year about this time, I would raise the rather uncomfortable question of pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. It is an acronym, which, payment in lieu of taxes, which is ironic because the city charges taxes on our utilities. So I'm not quite sure how you have a tax and a payment in lieu of a tax. So, and that's, and that's not even considering the monthly charge. And so, which I'm not really sure what you want to call that. So now we have a utility tax, a payment in lieu of tax, and a monthly charge, adding up to what is about thirty-six percent of actual charges. So that's really how we're taxing our utilities. And my concern here really is on the effect on our housing costs, on our residents, particularly our low-income residents. About, a few years ago, about ten percent, every year, about ten percent of our households were, were having their utilities cut off for non-payment, which puts families at risk of having their children taken away from them, certainly of losing their homes, and it is very expensive to have your utilities put back on. It's kind of why it's so expensive to be poor. And so, but, but what's, you know, the reason I always went up to pilot is what makes it so insidious is that unlike the utility tax and unlike the monthly charge, it is not going back into the enterprise fund. It's not going back into water and sewer and gas. It is going straight to the general fund, and it is five to six million dollars a year that is being charged to utility customers, and there's only about twenty thousand of them, that is, is going directly to something completely unrelated to utilities. And this has actually happened at a time when, and rumor has it, it's because we had so many county residents, county customers, is that all sorts of things were being tacked on to particularly the gas bill, and, and including, like, we were funding our whole IT department on the gas bill. That has since been remedied, but we still have this insidious pilot charge that is, really makes for unnecessarily high utility bills. So, so I reiterate what Ms. Quinn said, is that in your package tonight, it says utilities do not operate on a for-profit basis, and that is absolutely not true. I don't know how you would take five to six million dollars profit that you make on utilities to put it into the general fund and say you don't, you are, you don't operate on a for-profit basis. So I appreciate your attention to this, and I hope that you will try your best to make our utility, our housing affordable through our utility bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Moore.
Good evening. I'm Jim Moore. I live at twelve thirteen Hazel Street. I also wish to welcome the new city manager. I rent several homes in Belmont. I've rented them for about thirty years, and I'm giving you a copy of the letter I'm sending my tenants. For me, the rate increase that I saw to the gas, sort of the straw that breaks the camel's back. Now, I've kept my rentals significantly below full market rate, and I try to keep them that, that way. But you're, indirectly, you raised the real estate tax on two of my units over the past two years, went up thirty-four percent. And when you raise these utility rates, of course, you're not neutralizing the utility tax on gas that you're charging on top of these rate increases. So effectively, you're also increasing your income from the tax that's made on these increased rates. Of course, my tenants, there's, some of my tenants now are paying the portion of their rent that goes to pay the property tax alone is now more than two hundred dollars a month. So I'm not specifically maybe saying, don't raise it, the utility rate, rates or whatever. I'm just saying, since this is all fungible, and yes, there is some money that flows into the city, even though a lot of these customers live in the county, I, I'm just trying to convey to you the situation that lower-income or lower-cost renters are in. And I, a few questions I had from the presentation, you know, our sewer rates are about twice our water rates, so I don't understand why the costs aren't twice the water rates. The chart up there has the gas at six point three six percent, but the legal notice has it for all residential user customers at eight point one percent. So I don't know why I don't understand that discrepancy. I find that there are other, because traditionally, utilities are cash cows for municipalities, I see other expenses that if they were trying to, you know, save some money, could be done. First off, how many LEAP programs do we already have in the city? We have them at the Jefferson area planning level. We have them at the local level. We have all three government agent, local governments involved. And second off, how much do we spend each year advertising a non-renewable fossil fuel source? And I think that's my list. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? All right, closing the public hearing.
I have a question, Mayor Walker. In regards to Mr. Cullen, or, Ms. Smith raises a, a good point, and one that I would be interested in just getting an answer or response to in regards to how are we not using, if we're saying that the, the resources aren't for, well, I, just can we answer our question?
For profit.
Yeah, for profit. I don't know why I was drawing a blank on profit. But, I mean, there's nearly five to six million dollars, and it's going into the general fund. I think that's a fair question, if you could answer.
So the payment in lieu of taxes, what it represents is if these utilities were operated by a private firm within the city.
All right, closing the public hearing.
I have a question, Mayor Walker, in regards to Mr. Cullen, or, I don't know. Ms. Smith raises a good point, and one that I would be interested in just getting an answer or response to in regards to, how are we not using, if we're saying that the resources aren't for, well, just can we answer our question? Yeah, for profit. I don't know why I was drawing a blank on profit. But, I mean, there's nearly five to six million dollars, and it's going into the general fund. I think that's a fair question if you could answer.
So the payment of taxes, what it represents is if these utilities were operated by a private firm within the city, they would be paying real estate tax, personal property tax, those sorts of things. They would owe those to the city in the, as doing their course of business within the city. Utilities across the country and within Virginia charge those sorts of pilots to their, to their utilities. It's a commonly established practice. We at the city have had a number of analyses of this done, performed over the last seven, eight years. We've had our auditors look at it. We've had, in more recent history, we had our water and sewer rate consultants look at that, our natural gas rate consultants look at that. And they've reviewed the particular way that we do it and the practice itself, and have affirmed that it's commonplace. And that the way that we do it, they've affirmed that. Now, from the standpoint of a fiscal perspective, council does have a choice. You can choose not to charge the pilot, and I should back them and say, the pilot is an expense of the utility, and therefore it's included in the revenue requirements for all three utilities, not just gas. Maybe it's not called out quite as prominently for water and sewer, but it is included in there. It totals about six million dollars a year for the upcoming fiscal year. It's an expense of the utility. It's included in the revenue requirements that are then recouped through the rates and charges of the utility. So, from a fiscal perspective, though, council does have the option of not including it. However, then that creates a six-million-dollar gap in the general fund budget, which you could choose to close in other ways. So that's really the, sort of, the rubber meets the road aspect in terms of dollars and cents. It's an allowable expense of the utility. It's charged out to the utility customers on a proportionate basis, based on their usage. It comes back to the general fund. But again, council could make a decision not to include that in the general fund. Therefore, we would take it out of the rates, but then obviously that does create a gap in the general fund.
Is this a, I'm just thinking out loud, Mr. Blair, but is this a portion of how this is taxed? Could this be taxed based on, like, could UVA be taxed and not the rest of the population? Would that be illegal if, or the county and not Charleston City residents?
No, I don't think there's any authority to sort of differentiate between the university, the county, and the city in terms of how you would levy the pilot.
Kind of, from, from my perspective, it comes back to the idea of cost of service, that you pay based on your proportionate usage.
So I guess if we just got more information about, like, just the alternative recommendation, like, if, what it would look like?
You're talking about in terms of reducing it and not paying a pilot, and then?
Yeah, so what, because you're saying you would close that gap another way. Well, I think first we would know what the actual gap would be, and what the proposals for that, and what that would look like on a, you know, average customer basis, just like you outlined some of the other.
So the alternative would be for, for the city not to assess a pilot. And so we would take that out of each of the utilities. We would reduce the rates accordingly. But then, in terms of the general fund budget, the budget that you all adopted in April has been balanced, including six million dollars of utility payment, pilot payments.
And all of the utility, the reports that you just gave us, they are funded by the enterprise fund versus general? So it wouldn't impact long-term debt and anything?
Correct, yeah. The cost of the pilot are limited to just that cost center, for lack of a better term.
So again, just to clarify, if we had decided to go and move this towards its own enterprise fund, that would only be able to be used to pay for the gas infrastructure? If we decided to put that towards the enterprise, its own enterprise fund?
The pilot?
Yeah, if we didn't do a pilot.
If you didn't do a pilot.
Yeah, but instead we had a dedicated, we established an enterprise fund for nat, for the natural gas. That would mean that it would, that money could only go for natural gas infrastructure.
Correct. All of the utilities operate as enterprise funds, and the water rates pay for water, sewer for sewer, gas for gas, which is, somewhat speaks to the gentleman's question about why the difference between water and sewer rates. Each one is unique. Typically wastewater costs are much more expensive than potable water. Although, looking ahead in the next few years and looking at some of the changes of technology that RAVANA have adopted, as you're very aware of, there are some significant costs coming in terms of water production, in terms of the granulated activated carbon infrastructure that was put in years ago, and now they're actually in an operating stance with those. And those costs are significant, and those were known when those decisions were made. So yes, each, each enterprise act, operates separate from the others. Water shapes with water, wastewater with wastewater, gas with gas, stormwater with stormwater.
And at the end of the year, are those balances zero, or is they a reserve fund?
It depends. We, we plan, just like with the general fund budget, we prepare a balanced budget. However, every year, there's a difference. In most recent history, it's been a surplus. And the utilities, they typically are very close, but not, it's not zero for zero at the end of any particular year. But it's usually within a few percentage points of actuals to budget. And those funds stay with, and those fund balances stay within each of those funds. We do have fiscal policies to maintain working capital for each of those. And to the extent that we do have more than what we need, we do apply those back. Part of the gas rates, part of the revenue requirements of the gas fund for FY 2020, we didn't call it out in particular in the presentation, but it's in the report. We're going to use about one point seven million dollars of fund balance to fund some of the one-time capital sorts of things associated with gas, because we do have a fairly healthy fund balance there that's built up over a number of years. And so rather than continue to put some of those costs into the rates and continue to develop it that way, it makes sense, and it's financially prudent to go ahead and use some of that fund balance for those one-time expenses in the upcoming fiscal year.
And the only other thought that I have is, you know, we have acknowledged the amount of time that the citizens of Charleston Hill was tight, you know, carrying, you know, the utility rates, paying for themselves, UVA's rates. And I just think that some of that money, which I have brought up in meetings, but some of the resources that come in from UVA should go into the gas assistance program, the city's fund of that. And if it's a way that we can get some information on what, you know, staff would recommend for that, because the, the families who would need that assistance would have been the families that over the past thirty-plus years would have been hit hardest by having, you know, to pay more for rates because the university, they weren't. Also, trying to find this on the website is a little bit challenging, too. And so if we can make sure that people are aware that, that it exists in the process. Yeah. The process of figuring out how much of the money that we are capturing from UVA, what percentage of that can we put into this fund, and then?
We can certainly make the assistance programs more readily evident. I think it's also important, the toilet rebate programs, the thermostat programs. You know, the vast majority, I think, the number that we calculated this year, eighty-five percent of a person's utility bill is within their control in terms of their usage. And so, you know, low-flow toilets, leak detection kits, you know, those sorts of things. You know, while they also, ADIS and conservation also help our customers wallets as well. And then in terms of the assistance programs, just to touch briefly on those, they are fully funded in this proposed budget for the utilities. My understanding is that they are fairly fully subscribed to. We usually have more than adequate resources, financial resources, to, to enroll folks in that and to assist folks. That being said, one of the things I am going to task our utility billing manager with in the upcoming year is to look at our assistance programs and say, yes, we've done this for a number of years, but is this, is this all we can do? Are there things out there that are more best practices, more innovative, those sorts of things? Are there other programs that we can be looking at or piggyback on? And then also, you know, an analysis of what state code allows us to do as well. So, so in terms of the, the assistance programs themselves, I think they're, you know, we can do, definitely, do that due diligence, just to make sure that what we are doing is adequate and appropriate in terms of those efforts.
Yeah, and I would just encourage us to just be careful about use and control, because if, I grew up in one of the old X Mills homes, and they had the gas unit in the floor, and it didn't travel very far. And so while every year, the bill was extremely high and was supplemented with other heat, it wasn't very warm in those places. And so there are families who I know are still dealing with not being able to upgrade their system. So it doesn't matter how much they attempt to not use on those cold December days, like you all talked about up there. It would be very challenging for them to not try to use and hope to feel the heat that they are using, which doesn't always work that way. So just have to be mindful of that.
And I just, I know this came up when we met earlier, but I just feel like when you look in the onset of these gas rates, it can be confusing, that six percent without, I know eventually you get there, and it took me like forty-five minutes in your conversation to understand that it really is that snapshot in time, and that that can change. I just think that a little bit more explanation of that, because people are just looking at that like, oh, what is this increase?
Sure, and actually, it's a little confusing for us every year as well, because again, we do these, this purchase gas adjustment every month. And so when we get to every year, and we're doing, again, as you said, sort of these snapshots in time, we want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, that, you know, that's the way we've presented it in the past. And so over time, we want to make sure we're being consistent, so you can, you know, you can see what's actually happening and that we're not, can be accused of picking and choosing what we want to show. But we have, again, in working with our natural gas consultant, they've offered up some suggestions that have a better way to explain that of, you know, this is the purchase, you know, this is the cost of purchase gas. It has its variables. It fluctuates. Then the other piece is the city operations and maintenance, which don't, that that stays steady during the course of the fiscal year. And we've, we've tried to incorporate some of that into the rate report by splitting some of that out and maybe spending a little more time talking about each of those separately, whereas in the past, it was somewhat lumped together. But I do appreciate your point of trying to make it a little more transparent, a little easier to understand, because again, it is a snapshot in time of a, of a commodity that changes on a daily basis.
I have a question, and I just want to know, how much of a dialogue do you have with the Office of Sustainability? Because just last month, we had Susan Elliott give us a presentation about how we're going to be pursuing reduction of our greenhouse gas emissions and moving towards the use of a more solar-powered, solar-generated energy. And you mentioned that gas, natural gas is our main fuel to generate electricity. So, has there been any dialogue with what can be done at the municipal level to, to replace the natural gas with solar-powered electricity?
I have not had that dialogue, and that's certainly, from a customer's perspective, that's a choice that they have.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to, this is like an overall master plan vision for the infrastructure of the city. And it would be making sure that, one, the right hand's knowing what the left hand's doing.
Sure.
Actually, the natural gas marketing coordinator that handles various programs for us coordinates with environmental sustainability and Susan Elliott regularly, just to make sure that we're in sync with what the programs we are. And that's how we originated this LEAP program that we're launching July 1st, because we thought it would complement what they're already focused on. And it fills a gap that wasn't being recognized.
And that's all about conservation, but I, I would be very interested in seeing what kind of steps could be taken to literally start replacing natural gas as our fuel source with solar, and how we could do that at a municipal level, with our municipal buildings. And, and just, it's just an investigation. If no one else is interested, that's one thing, but I'm very interested in seeing how we could move in a, in a different direction of using solar as the fundamental fuel for electricity generation. And that, and that also sounds to me, basically what we've talked about, you just, we were just saying how volatile the natural gas industry is, and it's going to get worse and worse and worse, given the global politics that we're in. So it seems to me that would actually be in a direction of investigating more stable source of energy. I mean, again, is, I would like to do that. I know I need another counselor to be interested in doing that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's very good, good reporting.
Okay, and so that's a no vote?
Right, I think the question would be, does the council want a consent or?
I wish you'd put that back on.
Okay, so regular agenda.
No, we can put it on the consent, but Jesse used to be here, you know. All right, so going to consent. All right, so next we have appropriation of human services balance for fiscal year 2019. Expense four hundred thousand, first of two reading.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kaky dimick. I'm here before you tonight to request an appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars from the human services fund balance to cover unexpected fiscal year 2019 expenses, primarily in the area of foster care expenses, foster care family stipend payments, which are significantly higher than anticipated this year because there's a significantly higher number of kids in foster care. Our foster family program, community attention foster family program, provides foster families to Green County, Almiral County, and the city of Charlottesville. So this increase is not simply reflected in our own local Department of Social Services, but in all three municipalities. These funds are covered a hundred percent by Children's Services Act money. It's just that those monies will come in fiscal year 20 after the billing cycle is done, and so we need permission to spend the funds now to make the on-time foster care payments.
And then how does that funding cycle work when you get, you do receive them, then it just gets?
It goes back into our fund balance in fiscal year 20, when the payments are received, they go back into our fund balance. So it's essentially a float from our fund balance.
And this may possibly be a question for future conversation, but the increase in the number of cases, just was there any consistency in the reason why families were, is there something that on a local level we need to be targeting and discussing? So if that's just something that we can just think about, and, and was there any solutions that we can help with and start talking about citywide as to get those, you know, numbers maybe down?
It does reflect, this increase is reflected in a national change as well. It's not just a local shift in the number of kids in foster care. Over the last two years, the national number has gone up as well, lots of other kinds of localities. And so we have looked at that, and all three municipalities, of course, are interested in reducing the number of kids in foster care and investing pretty heavily in prevention services. And so it was a little bit of a surprise last year when this happened, and we thought maybe it was a little blip and that it wouldn't happen again, but it actually has been a sustained increase over two years.
So did something change? I know there was a decrease of, you know, maybe ten years or so back when the family reunification, staying with the family, when that happened from the state level and the localities were told to do what you can to keep families together. Has that changed, or?
It has not. I mean, I, there's a strong both political will and programmatic will to keep kids out of foster care. And so there's pretty significant investment in prevention services across the board. And prevention services are frankly cheaper as well for local municipalities than the more expensive foster care. So there's incentives built in in all kinds of ways, and, and still the numbers have gone up in the last two years, and not just locally, but across the board.
And so for this program, is it similar to like the Department of Social Services, where the majority of kids are black or brown children? where the majority of kids are black or brown children and the majority of the parents are white foster family?
I don't know the demographics for the foster kids from all three municipalities, but there are a disproportionate number of kids of color in foster care. And so I would assume that that same applies for kids who are actually placed with our foster families. We are focusing pretty heavily on trying to increase the number of foster families of color that we, that we have in our program, but it's slow going. And so we still have a majority of white families who are off of foster care.
Well, any questions related to the fund balance? All right.
You can put this on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. No vote, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Unity Days planning and funding transfer. A hundred thousand dollars, first of one reading.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brian Wheeler, Director of Communications and?
Charlene Green, Manager for the Office of Human Rights.
We're pleased to be here tonight to provide an update to council and the community about the planning for our Unity Days activities. You approved Unity Days as a recurring community event to mark the anniversary of August 2017. And in this first year, staff and a group of citizens who met initially in focus groups came up with a proposal for you to spread this out over four months this year with activities on different themes in each month. And our goal is to have programs that educate, inspire, and honor people in our community to create movement towards healing and unity on a path for economic and racial justice. After council's endorsement of Unity Days, we invited the community to the planning table. And I'm pleased to report that we've, we've had nineteen members of the Unity Days Action Committee. Almost half the committee was here tonight at the beginning of the council meeting. So these are very engaged citizens, many of which you know well. And we've been meeting every two weeks since mid-March and that part, as part of that work.
And I would say also that because of the themes for each month, those subcommittees have also been meeting. So some folks meet possibly three to four times a month.
And Charlene has definitely taken charge of the May and June activities. And the May, as you heard from speakers tonight, the May activities, we had about twenty events on the calendar. Many of those were lectures and tours. Some were also events that were already happening in the community, like the Festival of Cultures, but they wanted to come under the umbrella of Unity Days. And we had a table at that event and we're able to help share some information about our programming. This Wednesday of this week, the Action Committee is going to review all the proposals that are in the hopper right now for the rest of the summer. You've got those in an updated blue sheet in front of you. So there, a few more came in after we prepared the council packet. So that's the, the current list. But the goal is to have them select which of those events they want to endorse and, and hopefully apply some funding to for some of the ones that require the city's support. The other thing I would say is that the proposal process, we've been very open with the public and all of our meetings are open. There's been a lot of media coverage of these events and talking about how proposals can be submitted. And the committee's gotten over forty proposals in total. So we think we have a, a good mix of things to choose from. And, you know, tonight what we're asking for is your input, any guidance you want to give us at this, at this point in time. We promised we'd come back to you. But also we do have an ask and that's to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from previously appropriated funds towards this effort.
So just these amounts, they are not, they are guaranteed or not guaranteed?
That's the ask from the organizer. No decisions have been made about funding.
And who will make these decisions?
So the, the Action Committee will recommend to staff.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, you know, staff will have to make the final recommendation to the city manager about which, how much we invest in these things.
So, one, thank you all and even to the members of the Unity Day Community, uh, Committee. Guys have been putting in a lot of work. So there's a couple of things that stick out to me. So, and again, this is with the utmost respect because there's a lot of work that's been put in. So for me, for individuals like who are of my age demographic, like the events aren't extremely appealing to like the folks that are maybe at the, the BCBA games on Sunday. And one of the things I heard, Tanisha and I were talking before, and then there's been some other folks who've been asking me about this as well, like, what's it going to take for us to have a hip-hop concert here or R&B concert here?
Did they submit a proposal?
Well, can I, I'm about to.
Just asking.
I'm about to tell you that they are, let me get to my point, love you. So in that regard, like, to attract a certain amount of talent or like a marquee name, like I see the pavilion is, is, is on tap. If we wanted to bring in, like, a couple of years ago, there was a discussion around bringing Rick Ross down here. There's been some talk about bringing other hip-hop artists like Yorgotti and, and others of sorts. You're going to need a more significant budget to bring these folks in if we want to do this right. And I think we have the opportunity, if we want to bring in some higher profile artists as they would like to come to Charlottesville, I've heard this several times, I think from a council's perspective, we're going to need to actually increase the amount of money that we allocate, again, if we want to bring in different caliber artists and include local acts with it. Because I think that's something that people here in our community have been asking about for a long time. We don't ever get the big hip-hop artists for whatever reason. And when we do, the tickets are, well, I'll just leave it at that.
So I would ditto the question that the mayor just asked in terms of have, has anyone who's expressed a concern about the offerings not being diverse or inclusive enough submitted a proposal? Because the proposals are, are the events are driven by the community.
Right.
And so?
So my answer would be yes. Those, those individuals are in contact with Ms. Hudson.
Okay, so, so then, sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
So we've got a proposal for an, an event in July, actually two events, on a Saturday and a Sunday, that sound like they're going to be very appropriate for the demographic that you're concerned about. We have not gotten a proposal about a hip-hop concert or something like that for August. And so I, I think to be respectful to our law enforcement folks, to fall in line with the policies that are in place about the submission of proposals in, for the facility usage, that we're trying to stick to a timeline to make sure that planning can be done in a way that is not last minute.
Got you.
That doesn't involve all of the, the, the concerns that are beyond what the committee can address to make sure that it's a safe and, and effective event.
Yeah, so I think that's one part of it, but what I'm saying to council is that, for, for example, those proposals as they come, we're going to need to allocate more resources to this budget in order to be able to do the things that people want to see.
Sure.
So like a hundred thousand dollars, in my opinion, is not enough for us to put on the kind of events that people here truly want to see.
But couldn't you, if there, if the event was possible to happen this summer, couldn't you bring a proposal back and save that amount of money?
Yeah. Well, right, but I want to put this on our radar now.
That you're going to come back to us and ask for more money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you going to go through the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
But the conversation had to be raised, in my personal opinion.
Well, the conversation's been going on since the committee has been formed.
Yeah.
Let me put that out there.
I think that.
That the conversation about the, the types of events, whether they be focused on youth, whether they reach out to all kinds of communities because of, of unity.
I'm talking about the conversation with them, not the conversation with you and the, and the Unity Days community. That's why I think we're saying two different things. I'm talking about for my colleagues, I want to make sure that they're aware that that will come forth. That's the point.
Well, summer's almost over.
Okay.
Even though it hasn't really started in terms of the planning, we want to make sure that we have adequate time to, to do what we need to do. And so I hope we get any more potential proposals in so that on Wednesday, some final decisions can be made about how we're going to move forward for the rest of the, the summer.
Okay.
And I, so this, so I'm going to, this, the, one of the largest amounts here, are you all going through to just talk about how you are attracting people? Like if there was funding for the Seaville Culinary Experience, right, it's a ten thousand dollar ask. I'm not clear, are you all clear about what that means and how the entire community could potentially benefit or is that not the intention?
With respect to that proposal, it's not been submitted yet. So it's down in that.
Anticipated, okay.
It's down in that group that we haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
And, you know, Joan Fenton has been involved in that one and she's been meeting with downtown business owners to talk about their interest and what they want to put on that submission. So we, we will look at that. But I think your question, and much the way Charlene addressed, you know, music, a lot of the conversation is, how, how can we get people in these July and August events in a unifying way that's attracting different audiences than perhaps have been coming to the May initial events that have been more lectures, right? And Dr. Bellamy?
And who's been coming to?
Well, it's, it's not representative of the community as a whole.
Yeah.
Yep. However, I would say that those lectures, to, to the ones I've been to, have been very powerful. To see presentations about slavery at UVA, eugenics and its connection to UVA. I mean, I've lived here thirty-five years and I've learned a lot in just a short amount of time here about our history. It's been impactful on me personally.
And it's not all lectures. There are a couple of tours that, there are the Monticello, the Main Street tours that happen twice a month. The, the next one is this Saturday. And for folks who have no idea about the, the stores that were owned by blacks on the downtown mall, that's a, that's a tour that everybody should take. I'm going to do it for the third time because I'm learning something new every time I do it, especially connections to Ohio where I'm from. So.
And I think those things are, are extremely informative, but are they appealing to this demographic? And I think that is again where we missed, like, that's where the disconnect is, like.
And Council, Councilor Bellamy, then I would say.
But I can't say, I'm not at the meeting, so.
Right, right. But, but then the, the folks who feel like things aren't appealing to them need to come to those meetings and, and say, what is it that is going to be appealing to them? So if it's not a, if it, so the themes, May is history. May was history. So we talked about all those ways in which folks have no idea about the, the racial and ethnic history of Charlottesville. And so that, like Brian said, that was very informative for folks. This month is a focus on addressing institutions of oppression. And so we've got some events scheduled. There might be a couple of more that might be thrown in there, but again, we've been reaching out to folks to say, if this is something you're interested in being a part of, submit a proposal. But then we're also trying to get the word out about attending these events. July will be a focus on honoring community leaders, past and present, around social justice. And then August will be a focus on remembering those folks who, who were killed and who were injured and a call to action.
Where do the events take place?
They're all over.
I know, but like, can you, guys give me like a couple of places where like?
They're right here, like a venue.
They've been at City Space, they've been the tour on the downtown mall, they've been at, see, here in City Council Chambers.
So that's where I think the disconnect is. Like, we're, we're using a model, a traditional model in the sense of, we're going to have these events that we think would be appealing to folks, which they're informative, but they're in places in which we don't normally come. So like, what, what would it look like if we were to have these events at the barber shop? What would it look like if we had these events at the hair salon? What would it look like if we had these kind of talks? Like if we partnered with BCBA and said, well, we're going to do some stuff like on a Sunday? It's like.
I hear you, I hear you.
There's no one to come to us.
They, they need to submit some proposals.
But we know that.
But I have a, I, I would like to share quickly, because I haven't been on the tours, because in my mind, and I just had a conversation with one of the leaders of the tours, it's how the tours used to happen, which you didn't get very, you know, factual information. That's not what's happening, but that is in my head what is happening, what I think is happening. So I think it, you know, part of this is just kind of stepping out. We gave fifty-five thousand dollars for what is happening locally for us to go and visit across state lines to Alabama last year. And you had to go to those places and when you got to those places, there were tours and information was given. So I think it's the same thing. I think our job is to figure out how to get people interested in going on a tour if they're thinking that the tour may be the kind of tour they participated in, in middle school or, you know, elementary school, where it was kind of one-sided.
If we're not cool, like, we don't, there's no relationship or if there's a limited relationship, then we're not coming.
So one of the things, and, and I'll, I'll end the discussion piece with, with this note, the staff was very clear in that we did not want to control this.
Yes, yeah.
We are support for the ideas coming in from the community. And so the community have, folks have been, like, these folks in, 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 in all City Council Chambers have been submitting proposals, have been coming to meetings and saying, this is what we would like to see happen. This is what we think would be interesting. And so I think if there's not enough there attracting the, the folks that you think are missing from the picture, then, you know, they can call me. They can send me an email.
Well, it's not just what I think is missing. You can look at the pictures, like, you look at the pictures when, when they're, they're online of the people who are attending and it's clear that there is a disconnect.
So I can just say, for me, when I had the conversation, I had to look at myself and say, what was I thinking was happening at these tours? That I wasn't attempting to fit this into my schedule. And for me, it went back to the tours we were taking on when we were younger and that I didn't feel like I was getting, given accurate information, so I thought that it was a waste of my time. I had the conversation about, no, we are trying to dismantle some of those lies that have been told in the past and tell truths that haven't been told. And so some of this information has been presented at the Jefferson School in other ways. So after having that conversation, I was able to just, for me, kind of look at why I hadn't been attending.
You're one person. And you're, you have a, you're plugged in in a completely different way than a lot of folks that you're not interacting with.
You still didn't hear anything I said.
I did hear you, but I don't think.
How do you have a tour, Wes, if you don't go on the tour? You going to bring?
So then we shouldn't be having.
The auction block to the barber shop?
All right.
What, are you going to pick it up and take it and?
Y'all know.
You want pictures? I'm just asking if they're doing a tour of local monuments, you can't pick them up.
All I'm saying is y'all got it. Y'all doing, y'all doing it. But I guarantee you, I can guarantee you at the four mile one, we'll have, well, I'll just leave it.
Let's just leave it.
I'll leave it there.
Okay.
I wanted to go ask a different, I want to ask a different question. And I brought this up with at least Brian earlier on. I've heard the university was mentioned in some of the earlier things in May. Can you tell me, is there anyone that's regularly at these meetings from the university and what role are they playing and how do you see them kind of playing a role throughout the rest of this, this season?
So early on, Louis Nelson from UVA and Carolyn Dillard in Community Relations, they've been involved in most of the meetings. So we've got good communications with the university. I would say Chief Brackney also has strong communications with the public safety side at UVA. So we're definitely talking to each other and what we want to hear from UVA is anything that they may be planning and figuring out how we can integrate with that work. So that's our conduit and we're going to keep working with those two as our, our immediate representatives.
I think it's especially important as we get closer. I think it's especially important as we get closer to the August timeframe, too.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, I'd like to make a motion. I move that we adopt a resolution to fund transfer to support Unity Day's marketing and programming for $100,000.
One second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay.
Are we, before, I do have discussion. Are we open to, is it set at this number, or are we open to if there are more proposals, that number could raise?
So my response to that would be, it seems to, this has been framed as a very fully-developed community and staff-led process that came up with this number and brought it to us. So I would say that if there was an increase that was requested, that it should come through the process. This feels arbitrary.
No, understood. I'm saying if it came back through them, if there was a request, they need more resources for X, Y, Z. Like, I want to make sure we're not capping it at 100,000.
My response would be, we would consider it on the merits like any agenda item, and we would hear, we would hear it, yeah.
Cool.
All right, please vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all the work. And thank you, thank you to the community members.
Thanks to all the community members.
And thanks to the community.
All right, we have a resolution divestment operating budget, first of one reading.
Good evening, Mayor Walker, members of city council. My name is Jason Vandiver. I serve as treasurer for the city of Charlottesville. I plan on being pretty brief tonight. You may remember that I was before this body about a month ago on May 6th to discuss the implications of divestment from fossil fuels and weapons manufacturers, both within the city's core operating fund and the city's retirement plan. We talked about the differences between those two approaches for each of those funds. So we do plan on presenting more information from the retirement commission later this fall, but I do have a resolution for your consideration regarding divestment within the city's operating fund investment portfolio. I've expressed to you all that I would be open and receptive to such a resolution and that this action can be carried out with minimal financial impact to the city. While this resolution may not accomplish everything you desire right away regarding the city's current investment portfolio, I believe this is a positive first step that we can take to explore what a sustainable and responsible investment strategy might look like for the city, and I'm pleased to partner with you in this effort. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the memo or the resolution, and I present this resolution for your consideration and approval.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we adopt a resolution supporting the divestment of city operating funds in any company involved in the production of fossil fuels or the production or upgrading of weapons and weapons systems.
A second.
Any questions, discussion?
I just want to say, I appreciate how quickly you've pulled this together, Mr. Vandiver, and you are confident that this is not going to have a negative impact on our fiscal stability?
Yeah, we took a look at the, took a look at the portfolio and discussed it with our investment manager, and we're confident in that.
Then this does really, in my mind, puts us in the right direction towards meeting all of our goals as embodied in our comp plan, embodied in our resolutions about sustainability.
So I have a comment. I would, I've thought a lot about this, done some research in other communities, and I appreciate Mr. Swanson's stalwart activism and leadership. I, I would support this enthusiastically if it were about carbon and those companies. I think this brings two things together, and I don't feel comfortable with the part that is about weapons systems because, I mean, my grandfather was in the army in World War II. I have a lot of friends who have been deployed overseas. This would cover, it's a dangerous world. You have North Korea and China and Russia that are competing with us internationally. We are, we have a military for lots of reasons that include weapon systems. If this was about assault weapons manufacturers, maybe, if it was more narrowly focused, and I've heard Mr. Swanson, and he's very compelling, it is, it is a certain vision of where the world, I guess, could be, but I don't see why Charlottesville City Council should be opining about whether weapons should be produced through our investment strategy. So I would be very comfortable and very enthusiastic about joining New York and London and all these other cities that have done the divestment part that is about climate and carbon production. But I think that this puts two, an apple and an orange together, and the second one, I just, I wish that that weren't the case, but those are my reservations.
Any other comments? All right. So, please vote. All right, Carrie's four to one. All right, next, we have a resolution for fiscal year 2020, City of Promise Funding to Ready Kids, first of two readings.
Good evening again. Kakydymic, and I'm here before you to request permission to transfer already appropriated fiscal year 2020 funds in the amount of $81,837 to Ready Kids, which is serving as the fiscal agent for City of Promise. City of Promise has been supported as a city council initiative by the city for seven years or so since its inception. We have funded and supported the salary of the director of that program and also provided some grant funding from the state for staff who are providing check and connect services. A year and a half ago, almost two years ago, the City of Promise Advisory Board determined that the next step for the City of Promise as an organization was to become independent of both Ready Kids, which served some fiscal agency services for them, and from the city to become an independent 501(c)(3). We hired Denise Johnson to serve as the program director, who successfully shepherded the program to independent 501(c)(3) status recently awarded by the IRS and established a preliminary advisory board that would serve as the sort of backbone for a new board of directors. Since that time, Ms. Johnson has sadly accepted a position with Charlottesville City Schools, and so we're in a position now, as City of Promise is in transition, of saying, do we support, we have appropriated the funds already to support a director for the City of Promise for next year. Do we do that knowing that they will, that we'll be asking for some independence at the, sort of, June of 2020? Or do we just make that, that functional sort of independence now? City of Promise has decided to continue to benefit from Ready Kids fiscal agency rather than try to transition into full independence all at one time, which I think is a prudent move. And so what we're requesting is, instead of using the funds to hire a director for the City of Promise program for next year, as a city employee, that we shift those funds to Ready Kids and allow that, them to do the hiring of the new interim or permanent director, and then take the next steps in their independence. Would anticipate that City of Promise would ask for continued support from the city of Charlottesville over time, but we haven't determined what that support would look like.
I have a question, if I may. So how would the City of Promise raise money? It has to go look for grants, other grants, just like every other nonprofit.
And cultivate individual donors. I think they've, they've done really successfully, because they've been a little bit sort of hobbled by their connection, supported and hobbled by their connection with Ready Kids and also with the city, they've actually spent a fair amount of their initial time around development focused on individual donors, which I think is really prudent for them. A lot of programs start based on grant funding that eventually runs out, and so to start with a foundation of individual donors, I think it's quite smart of them.
So, and they've already been doing that?
They have, and they have a little bit of fund balance going into next year that is already held by Ready Kids, and so I feel optimistic about City of Promise's future. This is an aggressive timeline for independence. If it were me, I would be doing it sort of very small increments over five years, but I think it's, what, one of the things they heard when they began to cultivate individual donors is that the individual donors wanted them to be independent of both the city and of Ready Kids, so this is an important step in that process.
So the entire amount that's being requested is going towards the salary for the interim director?
I think there's a little bit of programmatic dollars that we've used historically, but it's not more than $2,000 or $3,000. We're holding back a portion of $7,600 that has traditionally gone to support the City of Promise building in terms of utilities and maintenance for the building, which is, continues to be owned by the city. So the remainder is both director costs and a little bit of programmatic money, I believe, that's been used in the past for scholarships or summer camps and those, those kinds of special trips.
All right.
Consent agenda? You're gonna put on the consent agenda? Right, so it's only, this is first of two years.
Consent agenda. Just follow me.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And I'm probably, so if I abstain from this vote, would, I would just pull it?
Yes, I think you just pull the item and ask for a separate vote on that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, resolution, special use permit, SUP 1617 Emmett Street, drive-through, first of one reading, was published as first of two readings, but only one reading is required.
All right, hello?
Good evening.
Yes, my first time up here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks, I'm with NDS, I'm Joey Linder, I'm a city planner. And so this item before you tonight is a special use permit request for 1617 Emmett Street North. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to authorize a specific land use, which is a drive-through window for a restaurant. And their proposal is to convert the existing structure at 1617 Emmett Street, which is a former bank, into a coffee shop with a drive-through window. Now, two pieces of background on this request. One is that the proposed use of the building, which would be defined the code as a restaurant, is a byright use in the HW zoning district, so this SUP request is only for the drive-through window for the restaurant. Second thing I'd like to bring your attention is that city council approved an ordinance to authorize restaurants with drive-through windows in the HW zoning district if they have a special use permit. That was done on August 20th of 2018. Prior to that date, drive-through windows for restaurants in this zoning district were not allowed under any circumstance. The Planning Commission discussed this item at their May 14th meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of this SUP request with three conditions. Condition one, will ensure that no work modifying existing buildings or structures will take place until entrance corridor review has occurred, and this property does lie within an entrance corridor. Condition two, will address concerns from the traffic engineer about two-way vehicle circulation that was proposed at the site. And condition three, will provide for safer pedestrian access to the coffee shop. In terms of public comment on this application, the required community meeting was held by the applicant on March 21st, and a second unofficial community meeting was held on March 28th. Both those were at this site, 1617 Emmett Street. No written public comment was received during this application process, and no members of the public spoke for or against this proposal on May 14th during the joint public hearing. So in conclusion, please remember that the factors to consider as you consider this SUP are listed in the staff report and Section 34157 of City Code, and staff is available to answer any questions. You all may have. Thank you.
The bank that preceded it had a drive-through.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
I do have a question. How much was the plan, how much briefing and review did the Planning Commission receive about the hydraulic small area plan? Because in August 2018, the Planning Commission rejected the zoning text amendment to allow for a drive-through in a restaurant in highway commercial. So I'm just, I'm just kind of confused by the disconnect there, that in the one hand, the Planning Commission was opposed to a zoning text amendment, and then now unanimously they were for the drive-through in a, in a small area plan. I'm not talking about the other highway commercial corridor districts. I understand that that can apply in, say, Fifth Street, but this is a small area plan that's been appended to the comprehensive plan that emphasize mixed income, mixed use, multimodal orientation, pedestrian orientation. So I'm just curious, why, was that anything that ever transpired?
I can't say how much the Planning Commission dug into this. I do know in the, in the staff report, and I don't know anything before, I guess, three months or so, since I was here, staff looked into the hydraulic small area plan and the zoning ordinance as well, and the HW zoning classification in the code. The purpose of that district, as stated in the code, is to facilitate development of commercial nature that's more auto-oriented than the mixed use in neighborhood commercial corridors. And then in the small area plan, the hydraulic small area plan, there is a conceptual land use plan in that, in that document, and it designates this parcel as commercial. And it states that that commercial category applies to community and regional shopping centers and highway-oriented, highway-oriented retail districts. So both of those, the zoning ordinance and the small area plan mention highway or auto-oriented for this site. And that was why staff's determination was that this is, this is an appropriate use.
And we approved one just up the street, right, a couple months back?
No, I think we approved the amendment knowing that this was coming. That's what I remember.
That was the zoning text amendment.
Okay.
Well, I'll say this for, because I, I've read different pages of the hydraulic small area plan, and the definition of commercial is different. It's much more oriented towards pedestrian orientation, so I'm, it's not the existing zoning. So I'm just saying that this is a comprehensive plan piece, and I'm just curious as to how much we, there was a discussion, and thank you.
Any further questions? Okay.
I move we adopt a resolution approving a special use permit to authorize the establishment and operation of a restaurant with a drive-through window at 1617 Emmett Street North.
For a second.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
I'd like to make my statement, Mayor Walker, in opposition to this, again, relative to what was discussed back in August 2018, and that's also a time when Mr. Chip Boils from the Thomas Strifson Planning District Commission advocated for not approving the zoning text amendment because it would not conform to the hydraulic small area plan, which had been appended to the comprehensive plan in 2018. When you look at the vision of the hydraulic small area plan, it says it should promote a strong sense of place, an equitable, environmentally sustainable community that encourages mode shifts away from the reliance on the personal automobile and supports a diverse range of household incomes as well as multi-generational characteristics. The goal was to promote a vibrant, dynamic economy that was, had a pedestrian-friendly relationship to the street. It would promote a vibrant mix of uses to create a workplace designation and destination that's walkable and provides a variety of transportation options. And the final goal was to be connected, efficient multimodal transportation that provided convenient and safe options for crossing US 29, including great separated crossings at Zand Road and Angus Road. And this is right at Angus Road. So I, I find that furthermore, the plan implementation strategy called for this becoming, moving towards a form-based code. Instead, we got a zoning text amendment that went retro and made us more going towards a car-oriented development pattern as opposed to the word pedestrian, walking, inclusive, mixed is used several times in the hydraulic small area plan, not single use, not dominated by the automobile. So I, I really don't think I, this, this- So I, I really don't think I, this, this special use permit furthers the vision of the small area plan either from a transportation standpoint or an economic standpoint. It's not supposed to be oriented towards corporate coffee-making, it's supposed to be oriented towards small businesses, local businesses. So I just, I find that really unfortunate because at the time we agreed to this zoning text amendment, there was always the idea that we could review case by case the special use permit, whether it was appropriate. This has a small area plan attached to this geography, it's not like Fifth Street. I probably would have approved a, a drive-through in Fifth Street because it did not have a small area plan. But we continue to have resolutions passed about complete streets, about, we have comp plan on the books that talks about all this stuff. And we now have a small area plan passed in 2018, and we, we don't, we don't institute the zoning tools needed to implement the vision, we keep building on the existing zoning that we have, which is keeping us from moving forward. So I can't support this special use permit.
Any further discussion? All right, please vote. All right, it carries four to one. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have the Sunrise PUD Plan Unit Development Road Acceptance, first of one reading.
Good evening, Mayor Walker and councilors. Before you tonight is a resolution that is presented pursuant to City Code Section 10-56, and I want to just go over briefly some background and sort of also procedurally where this falls in the Sunrise development. In terms of the substance, in 2009, the City Council approved a planned unit development at the, for Sunrise, for the Sunrise project. And as part of that, there were three features included in that planned unit development. One was kind of narrower streets that are permitted by City Code. Two was permeable pavement was used. And three was that permeable pavement was used as part of on-street parking lanes. And none of these at the time were, I guess I'd use the word congruent with the Charlottesville City Code. However, there was instructions on that planned unit development to develop it, to try to work with the engineer and design team to have standard and, standard and design manual to make these conforming features. Habitat for Humanity has worked on this project diligently in the past decade, building units and making the development viable. As they've done that, there's been a subdivision plat that's been approved as part of this, as well as a site plan that included these features. Now we're at the point where there's another entity that's developing part of this PUD, but we're also at a point where Habitat is looking to have the streets dedicated to the city, which means that the city would then take over ownership of the streets. But before we get to the street ownership, this permeable pavement is part of a stormwater management function. And that stormwater management function, as part of transferring the streets to the city, that permeable pavement has to be transferred to the city. And since it is a stormwater management feature, Section 1056 of the City Code requires that the council pass a resolution to first, that authorizes the city attorney and city manager to engage in negotiations to have a contract with Habitat to take the permeable pavement stormwater feature under city control. And then, as you will see in the attached resolution, before the city will take the streets themselves into the city system, there are listed six different conditions that would need to be approved by the city manager and the city attorney before the streets would come to you asking to be taken into the city system as we do with other city streets and, other streets and developments within the City of Charlottesville. Again, the resolution before you is simply to authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with Habitat to take over the permeable pavement stormwater function. It is not to accept this as a street. That would be pursuant to the six conditions that are within this resolution. Then we would come back to council for a dedication of the streets.
Okay.
Thank you, I wasn't clear on that.
So if the negotiations fell through, then you all wouldn't come back?
Correct.
I just want to say, council, this is an old project, and things were done without the coordination between various departments, and we still have some things that need to be done. Moving forward, as you know, there are going to be some financial costs that we're going to have to incur due to the way that this project was done, so I just want you to be aware of that. And thank you, attorney, for explaining that, but some of the things that were done in this project shouldn't have been done many years ago, and I hope, well, we're going to make sure in the future that this stuff doesn't happen.
And so were these a part of, and just because I'm, I think I'm clear, but I'm tired. The city approved these, or they were done after the?
Well, there, there have been three separate city approvals along the way. The first in '09 was when the council approved the planned unit development as part of the land use component. Then there was a site plan approved, as well as a subdivision approval. So there have been three separate approvals along the way.
But in terms of the staff members who are supposed to monitor whether the work is being done correctly, the construction?
Well, concerning that, in 2009, when the council approved this, it did again include language that said nothing in the PUD development plan will be interpreted to prohibit the design team from working with the city engineer to modify the city's street standards to allow the internal streets to be dedicated for public use. So I think throughout these years, staff has sort of taken that note that the council enacted in 2009 as the council wants these streets ultimately accepted. In terms of that note, that just, this was sort of a unique design feature, the stormwater management in terms of permeable pavement was also a unique feature, and staff is just sort of going along with that 2009 note as they've approved these various portions of the project.
So are the homes in that area, have they, are they, I'm assuming, because how old is that project? So they would be still, Habitat would still be collecting monies from those homeowners? Right?
I would think so, yes. I mean, 2009 was when the PUD was approved, so you're not talking sales.
Yeah. So I would just hope that since there's money still coming in, and if there is expenses that Habitat should have incurred on their end, that the city in the negotiations figure out a way that maybe that money is collected, and maybe instead of the money supporting whatever Habitat uses the collection of those monies for, that they would help remedy this issue. However, it happens, but I just think that we should make sure that we at least set the tone that there's an expectation to correct the error.
Okay.
Mayor Walker may offer a, a comment, because this project began 10 years ago. 10 years ago, their design features in their streets were, yes, unique, but what they were, what they've done and built were narrower streets, streets that had used on-street parking to accommodate their parking requirements, which, given that this has a large affordable housing component, reduced cost per unit to build. And that the third thing, the permeable pavors, is actually a pretty progressive stormwater management strategy. Yes, it has more maintenance costs to it, but it is now a best practice. All those three items, narrower streets, using on-street parking to accommodate your parking requirement, as opposed to bulking up your building and using more of your land for asphalt, and then also using, moving towards strategies to better filter your stormwater filtration process, are all embedded in a city policy called the Streets That Work Plan that was adopted in 2016, and is now the basis upon which we're using to revise and reform our standards and design manual for all of our streets. So one could argue that actually Habitat was ahead of its time. So I, I feel that what they've done is actually given us a template on how to do our streets in a way that are safer and more sustainable, and actually more affordable. And I just think, I, I needed to make that statement, because I, I don't see this as something that, that Habitat is particularly totally responsible for, they were operating in good faith of the city. And they've given, and they, and now our city policy have, has evolved to the point where it is matching what they built.
But isn't there a maintenance piece, hopefully, in this new evolution of city policy?
Well, it, it's in our city policy, so it would be something that if we did, the city would, would assume that cost is a public street. That remains to be seen as we finalize our standards and design manual.
But for private developments, and if they're not city streets, what is the requirement that you are proposing?
I'm proposing that this become a public street.
No, I understand that, but what would have been the maintenance required, what would they have been required to do, or future developments be required to do differently?
I'm not sure I understand. I'm just saying that this is a, this is a design standard that builds in stormwater management into the street design, so it's part of the infrastructure. And if we, as a city, have adopted that as a policy and as a standard, then we shouldn't be charging the developer extra money for it. We should be assuming it and maintaining it like any other public street.
So do we know the cost?
No, we don't have a cost estimate now, what those future costs may, might be.
I'm just trying, because the history here just says this was an agreement that's been made, and I just, I just feel like, there's so much about this that bothers me in terms of just our responsibility as a city, where we fell short, and so I'm just, I'm just struggling, you know, I don't know that we have a choice, like this is our responsibility to go follow through on, I mean, this has been a 10-year project, they've been maintaining these streets for this long, and I'm sure at a cost for that, that period, and so I'm just, I mean, I think we have a responsibility, given the history that I'm reading here.
I agree.
All right, so we are passing the resolution tonight for you all to enter into negotiation.
Right.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
I move we adopt the resolution accepting responsibility for maintenance of certain stormwater management facilities within the Sunrise Planned Unit Development.
Accept responsibility.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Let's look at... I think I would probably just say, how about adopting the resolution as presented without the, the title?
Okay.
In, in terms of accepting responsibility for maintenance, well, it, what it's talking about is of certain stormwater management facilities within the development. And these are the, the stormwater facilities, not the street. Maybe the word regarding instead of- Regarding, that's-
Okay. Can I say regarding instead of acceptable?
Regarding.
Okay. I move we adopt a resolution regarding the responsibility for maintenance of certain stormwater management facilities within the Sunrise Planned Unit Development.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, please vote. All right, it carries five zero. I would want to know if homeowners have been paying any kind of increased cost?
For the permeable pavors, okay.
Next, we have Legislative Update. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lisa Robertson from the City Attorney's Office, and here with me tonight is David Blunt from the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. In your packets, you have a brief agenda memo which attaches TJPD's legislative summary and a list of items of legislation adopted by the General Assembly in 2019, which may have been of interest to you, and we're here to answer any questions you may have had about those items or about the 2019 session. And we would also like to have a brief discussion with you about how you might like to approach the prospect of developing an agenda for the 2020 session. We recommend that either you appoint a one- or two-person legislative committee, as you've done in years past, or identify some other process that would suit all of you, but our recommendation is that we have a basic legislative set of position statements and requests developed by the end of September, so that we can begin speaking with whomever are going to be our legislative representatives, and we can also begin doing any public education or development of wording for legislation before the time for bills to be prepared and submitted early in December. It's always a challenge to get that basic legislative agenda done early, but it's a, it puts you in a better position to, to advocate your positions if you can get it done in September or by the end of October at the latest. So I know it's getting late, David and I are happy to answer any questions you may have about the materials. And also to see if we can help you agree upon a working team to work with, with me and David and other staff to get your agenda matter set for 2020.
No, I really appreciate the proactiveness of this approach, considering where we were last year, just running around.
Exactly, and I love seeing what was passed and under what categories, this is really excellent, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I haven't fully digested it.
I understand, it's there if and when you would like to review it in more detail, though there may be a few things that will require local ordinances if you should choose to pursue them, such as adoption of transferable development rights, if that's something recommended after the comp plan and zoning ordinance review is completed, and there may be some tax, local tax codes that need to be adjusted, but for the most part, this is just for your information.
So I guess to kind of develop a formalized process, would you say that, you know, it would be ideal if we could identify a couple, maybe a couple representatives from council, we would then meet with you, starting when?
Probably in July or August at the latest. Depending on your schedules, I think probably early August would, would work to start that process and give a couple of months' time to get things underway.
Okay.
In years past, a two-person committee worked reasonably well, and if you choose that together, those people have sort of the authority of the larger council to at least do the preliminary legwork.
Sure.
Do you want us to choose now, or just to get back?
I think ideally you could choose now, but if you'd rather do it on a future agenda, that would be fine.
Is there anyone who has interest in doing this?
I'm interested.
That would be interesting.
There you go, there's two. As long as we're informed, I'm happy to have someone.
Anybody else wants to do?
I think we're going to start foundation with where we were last year and some of the things that maybe weren't as successful with optimism that it might- the things that maybe weren't as successful with optimism that it might be more successful. And I think there's some things we all can weigh in on, but I would happily have these two colleagues.
I would think it'd be important that we establish some kind of a structure that we get the whole council involved with this discussions as we move forward with ideas. Work sessions, whether it's, or at this meeting. But I think it, that's one thing that over the years is, it's actually been a bit opaque to me how this was often done. So I'm really grateful for this more open process and engaging us so early.
One thing with, with Mr. Blunt here, would the council like to entertain the idea of maybe trying what the school, the city school board and county school board, Board of Supervisors does and maybe establish a meeting with legislators, maybe as a work session to discuss your agenda? Is that?
I think early on, yeah, instead of the week that they're going back to Richmond.
How does this work with the, like, potential changes? Like, are they still engaged through the?
And, and I'll let David speak, but I, I think whoever, whoever's elected in November is, is who, they're, they're the ones who have the authority to introduce the bills.
Correct, yeah. And we really won't know the true lay of the land until after the November elections. I think for year two, representatives, one in the House and one in the Senate, after the primary next week, we may have a good idea. I'm not aware of any candidate on the, from the other major party. Same holds true in the Senate with Senator Deeds running for reelection.
So we would meet with not the current, but future?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking.
Another question I had, I just feel like it's an opportunity for us to have a more collaborative conversation with the county too, if there are things that would be more powerful when we're showing that unified front, especially since some of these representatives cover multiple jurisdictions. And I feel like this timing kind of helped gotten in the way of that. So whatever coordination we can do, and even beyond our own counties, what are some of the things that we have interest in that other areas around the Commonwealth have that we can kind of have a more unified front? Because sometimes that can be more powerful when we're, I mean, you could tell me if that's more powerful or not.
Yeah, I would say I think the earlier, the better. You can engage the legislators. That gives them an opportunity to give you some real good honest feedback about the likelihood of passing, you know, if you have your own initiatives. And as you said, to be able to reach out to other interested parties about bills that you may, you may be in support of or things that you're thinking of running up the flagpole. It gives more time for that as well.
Is the most efficient way, like, for Ms. Robertson to reach out to other city and county attorneys, as everyone's kind of doing their packets in parallel, is that kind of just the path of least resistance, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, that's one way of doing it. And I think certainly through the process of VML, Virginia First Cities Coalition, and certainly Association of Counties as well is plugged into a lot of the same issues.
Great.
We typically, we certainly do that every year. And typically, one of you is always on the Virginia First Cities entity and Legislative Committee. That is very helpful. But like yourselves, they really don't get an official agenda set until later in the fall. And so what we would like to do with your subcommittee is start having a discussion internally about how would you like to develop this? What are the sorts of things you're thinking about? And then as you identify areas of interest, start reaching out to other entities to see if you can participate in a joint public meeting, or do you just need to speak with other people's legislators or, or staff? Or, once we know a little more about what your areas of interest are, we can work on multiple fronts to collaborate with other organizations and public entities.
And I just, if one of the current counselors are not able to participate, I would like to participate. So just.
Okay.
So, so we have two in an alternate. So we're good.
Okay. So David and I will reach out sometime in July to get either a late July meeting or early August scheduled with the subcommittee members. And we'll get started.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So any other business? Have other business?
I just wanted to ask about, last time we all met, we told Ms. Dimick we would give her feedback. Some of us said by Tuesday after our last meeting. And I just, I mentioned it because we are meeting with the county on Thursday, and I just really was hoping we'd have at least given her some comprehensive feedback so that directionally she can kind of speak to that. I mean, I realize we have a pretty packed agenda, but I think it's a real ripe opportunity for us to just have that conversation with the county. I, I just really feel strongly that trying to have some, some cohesiveness in that process with the county is important if we have a chance at doing that. And so I just, was just going to ask if anyone plans to give it to her, like, we need to do it as soon as possible.
And after it was decided to move it to the second meeting, it moved down on my list. So I've been working on parts of it, but I haven't been, that hasn't been my primary focus.
Does anyone else plan to give her feedback, just so we can let her know what might be coming?
Are you suggesting that we need, I'm trying to remember what was the deadline that Ms. Dimick gave us?
She gave, it was the Friday after our last council meeting.
Right.
And so then we didn't, it didn't happen. So we, it was not fair to ask her to present in front of us again this meeting. And also, I mean, I know I give feedback, but it was, it was a lot to consider. And so it's going to take some time just to kind of piece through if we have conflicting feedback. And we'll definitely have a robust discussion about it. But I was just mostly focused on the timeline because we're going to see the county on Thursday.
Well, my, and I appreciate that concern about the county very much so. However, it would be a little bit awkward, I think, at least from my perspective, if we all gave Ms. Dimick our, our comments, but then we as a body, body never talked about them just within ourselves.
And I think we're looking at a very high level. We just want to understand kind of where they are in terms of their willingness to.
And that I can certainly understand that we raised that question at our joint session with the county on Thursday. But I, I would, I would tend to be reserved about getting into the nitty gritty about the reforms themselves, because we ourselves as a body have not had that conversation.
But what, she will still need, regardless of the county meeting, we're in the same situation. We were two weeks ago, where like by Friday she would need to have it in order to be able to meaningfully digest it and re-get it, because we're trying to be better about staff timings for memos and.
Ready for the, the, the second meeting in June?
She would have to have our feedback this week.
This week?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the goal? So we didn't need to get it by this Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Emir Walker, I just have one other thing to, to bring up, and it's related to what Councilor Bellamy, Bellamy was talking about with regards to the historic markers, particularly with the, the slave block. And, and you and I were at the meeting on site with Andrew Douglas and Siri Russell, where, and we were with Norman Dill as well as Diana McKeel, where we were led through the steps of, of bringing into Charlottesville the historic marker for the Equal Justice Initiative Memorial for, for John Henry James. And it was at that point, Emir Walker, please correct me if my memory is not working very well, but we did talk about the marker for the slave block at the same time when we were talking about that marker. And, and I had the understanding from Ms. Douglas, Dr. Douglas, that there was actually, the language was already worked out for the marker for the slave block. It was just a matter of fabrication. So it would be, I don't think that we, I don't think the timing was going to work so that the, a marker for the slave block could be fabricated and installed at the same time as the EJI memorial marker. But that, that there, we needed to get going on dealing with those at the, at least close to being the same time. So my understanding is that that's already in process somewhere along the line. And maybe we could just get an update about where the, our Historic Resources Commission is on this discussion, on where they are, how, how long would it take to fabricate it? But that's, I, I do remember we had that conversation at the same time.
Yeah, and I'm not clear on whether they were talking about the marker for the EJI one. And so we would just need to get an update about.
The timing and the fabrication.
Should we should go through Mr. Warner? Or should we go through the committee? Who should we be asking?
Probably Mr. Warner.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Okay. Our preservation, is that what his title is?
Preservation Planner.
Preservation Planner.
Okay.
And so I have, in terms of looking at the city holiday, annual holiday, observed holidays for every year, and I wasn't clear on whether they were on the fiscal year or calendar year. Are they approved when?
Well, they are, I think they're, they're actually in the ordinance themselves as well as the personnel policies.
Okay.
And so I think it would be more of an ordinance change if, if you were looking at a, changing the city holiday.
Okay. So I would like to explore us replacing the April date celebrating Thomas Jefferson's birthday with the Liberation and Freedom Day in March. And wanted to know if there would be support for that.
Support.
So what are the next steps?
Okay. How about either at the next June meeting or the first July meeting, I will have an agenda item for that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have matters. Was there any other business? Okay, next we have matters by the public.
I wanted to practice speaking again. I was down at the Meriwether Lewis William Clark Monument this morning, and I noticed some interesting things that I wanted to share. It said, Meriwether Lewis, 1774 to 1809. He was 35 only when he died. William Clark, 1770 to 1838. I thought it was interesting that there was no mention made of Sacagawea. Then it had a statement, bold and far-seeing pathfinders who carried the flag of the young republic to the Western Ocean and revealed an unknown empire to the uses of mankind. I thought, well, that's okay, sure. But still, I think, you know, Sacagawea was very important. So then I thought about Martin Luther King statue in Washington DC and how words were added or a correction was made about Martin Luther King being a drum major, something to that effect. And I said to myself, well, why not hire the commission of an engraving of the name Sacagawea where there is room at the statue base beneath that of Meriwether Lewis and William Clark? After all, her figure is there, yet she has no mention. It is only fitting that her contribution is recognized as a symbol of unity and peace for all our people in America. We need more goodwill ambassadors like Sacagawea. She was the only woman on the expedition. And 385,000 square miles were added to the geography of our country. So let's add her name and let the statue on the small island of land where it stands remain where it is. It is well cared for by Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Oh, I have one.
No, it's just someone else. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brad Solcom. I live in the city. I want to first off, thank you all for voting to support the Unity Days effort. I'm, I'm getting the sense that you all don't necessarily know all the details of what's gone on, which is totally reasonable, because to be perfectly honest, I think it's been a very, I don't know if ad hoc is the right word, but it's been a very learning process. And I wanted specifically to speak to just a couple of points, particularly Counselor Bellamy's point about engaging younger people, engaging more diverse members of our community. That comes up basically every meeting. There's the bi-weekly action committee meetings and then the individual month committees. Basically, people who volunteered to help coordinate the events and activities for each month, May through August. And that's a discussion topic almost every week. And of the approximately 20 folks on the action committee, I think I'm one of maybe three that are under 40. And so this is a particular concern. But going back to the point about it being a learning process, I think there's a strong sense of almost everybody on the committee and a lot of people who have attended events that this want, that people want this to be a format that carries forward. It definitely needs to change. It definitely needs improvements. But I would say it's much preferable to the way things were looking this time last year. And obviously, like, we're not through the summer yet. But I think there's, there's a lot of positivity despite, you know, there, there have been varying levels of attendance. And I think there, there do need to be more offerings outside of the very central downtown area. And just to speak to that specifically, Counselor Bellamy, I would look into, I think staff could provide some of the proposals for the Positive Culture Fest, Vibe Fest, some of the other events that are going to be more in X Park, more accessible to other city residents besides just things right here, which I know when I, the events I've been able to go to, it is definitely an older, whiter crowd. And I see that at a lot of other things that I go to that aren't Unity Days, but I think matter a lot to a lot of the people in the city. And so that's definitely not just a Unity Days issue. That's a wider issue as well. But I think we've got a great start. And again, I really appreciate the support. And I would say if you want to learn more about how we're going about these things, keeping it community-driven, keeping it inclusive, there's a meeting this Wednesday, and I think we'll continue meeting bi-weekly throughout the summer. So anytime you all want to stop by and be part of that process, I think you'd be plenty welcome. So thank you.
And Wednesday at what time?
I believe 6:00 PM.
Dr. Bell?
Six or seven. I'll have to check on that.
It's already on my calendar. And I mean, I want to be clear, like, I'm not, I'm not trashing the Unity Day. I'm not, like, I'm not dissing them as no beef. I just do know the two meetings that I did, when I went by and I saw and poked my head in, like, you're right, there was maybe two people, you said three, so three people under 40. It wasn't three when I looked in, but, okay. And, like, how we.
Come out of the committee?
We understand.
Okay, we understand.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I want to tell you the story of Brandon, nicknamed Worm. The story of Scooby, Jerome, and Jeremy Richardson. We played popcorn and football together. They were my brothers. Left for Charlottesville in 87, and they continued to play football in South Charleston, West Virginia. Now, the reason why I'm on camera speaking is because Jimmy and Becky Jett have ran a yellow journalistic campaign against me, calling me a racist. Well, anybody that knows me knows that ain't true. Brandon was a running back, and we called him Worm. We ran like a worm. Scooby, named Jerome, we called him Scooby because he liked Scooby-Doo. And JR, we just called him JR. Now, the racial breakdown, Brandon was a black guy. Jerome was a black guy. Jeremy Richardson was a mixed guy. His father was black and his mother was white. Now, Becky and Jimmy Jett, your yellow journalistic campaign, hm, quite crappy. Now, I'm a Charlottesville black knight. I played with Jose Martin, Anthony Howard. I played with.
I played with George Webb. I played on a football team my senior year. There was thirty of us, five white kids, twenty-five black. Ask anyone of them, am I a racist?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.